Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the council in the city of Long Beach. So if you're here for 16th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Love a roll call? Councilmember Mendel?
Yeah.
Councilmember Van Delle?
Yeah.
Councilmember Moore?
Yeah.
Vice President Diamond?
Yeah.
President Arama?
Yeah.
As the record indicates, the presence of Acting City Manager Lalo Agostizzi and Assistant Corporation Counsel Richard Barres now be suited to the play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good evening. Thanks everyone for coming this evening. I think we have a couple of public hearings, so we'll get right to it. And I'll ask for Mr. Agostizzi to read the city manager's statement. Thank you, President Arama. Alright, earlier this month, the city partnered with the county of Hempstead to host a successful Stop Burgery event. A total of 866 participants, including 377 Long Beach residents, attended the event, so it's potentially nonviolent littles, including hazardous chemicals and leaks preventing them from entering our waste stream and environment. Thank you to all the games that play for the second or environment. And to our partners in Hempstead. For a list of upcoming Stop Burgery events and neighboring facilities, please visit the website. As a reminder, the city's street maintenance crews are out on pothole patrol and working proactively around the city to address potholes. To report pothole neighborhood, please download the Long Beach Response app on 300 smartphone at longbeachny.gov. The seventh annual canow cleanup will be taking place on Saturday, April 27, close to the meeting on the corner of East Chester and Harrow Street. All cleanup supplies are provided. For RSD, please use the mail model here at centralli.surfwriter.org. My impressions will be provided by partary groups. The city's third annual birthday celebration will be held in Hampton Plaza on Sunday, April 28, from June 30. You can enjoy great food and music while engaging environmental organizations and professionals. There will also be electric vehicles, ride and drive. For more details, visit longbeachny.gov/Earth. On that note, the city would like to sincerely thank PSG Long Island for acknowledging Storm Parting, the election assistance for providing more reliable service for residents, but also partnering with us on community purification projects, while providing residents with energy-efficient LED bulbs and reusable shopping bags in honor of our birthday. This administration is always working on environmentally friendly initiatives and reducing our city's carbon footprint, including banning smoking in our beach boardwalk passing. Nassau County's first ever carry-on ban ordinance, and tonight, the city council will be voting to ban intentional release of balloons. It's also worth noting that the city of Long Beach has been designated a clean energy community by the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, NICERTA. We received that designation based on our leadership in reducing energy use, cutting costs, and driving clean energy globally. Currently, Long Beach is one of the only communities on Long Island to be granted this designation, which qualifies the city to apply for $100,000 toward a sustainability project. That's determined by the city in coordination with NICERTA with no local cost share. We hope to have more information about this in the coming weeks. The city of Long Beach is also proud of the recognition of a lot of Long Beach businesses who have been designated as ocean-friendly restaurants by Surf Rider Foundation. Blacksmith's Breads, Breaker's Bowls, James Blue Coffee, Adam Time, Lost in Sea, and Wild Peace. Ocean-friendly restaurants is a voluntary program that tackles the cleaning source of plastic pollution, disposable plastics distributed by local eateries. Only a small portion of all plastics ash and again recycled. The rest ends up in a landfill, incinerator, or ash lecker. The most common discarded single-use plastic, Delta Big Four, food plastic grocery bags, string attached disposable coffee cups, and plastic soda bottles. Food container storage attempts to avoid model bottle cans and take their grocery bags, or some large portion of other family ocean beverages. By choosing a combination restaurant, foregoing social plastic, eateries go from being part of the problem to part of the solution. Additionally, their actions not only improve the environment, but also help spread awareness about consumer choices and how they affect the environment around us, encouraging others to make informed, intuitive, friendly decisions. As a reminder, beach passes will go on sale beginning May 6. The active recreation gazebo will be in 150 West Bay Drive starting next week. The gazebo will be open Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 6:00 PM, and Saturday through Sunday, 9:00 to 14:00. On May 18, local artists will be painting most of the factors on ocean view in my sense. In preparation, partnerships submit their proposed concepts to the Arts Council by May 3. If you're interested in submission, please email ehammer@longbeachny.gov for instructions and inventory. The project is underwritten by the West End Recreation Association with support from West End Neighborhood Association. In preparation for the consolidated funding application launch anticipated for over the May, Empire State Development is planning meetings around Long Island to provide suggestions such as businesses and nonprofit or an overview of the consolidated funding application CFD. They will review the CFD process and timeline, discuss funding opportunities, and answer any questions that tenants may have. For the first time, TSD is holding a meeting here in Long Beach will be on Thursday, May 2, at 1:00 PM, right here in the sixth floor of City Hall. If you can attend, having worked from the Economic Development Office can provide you with technical assistance and direct you to where you can find more information. Alright, thank you. I would just like to also thank PSG Long Island. I know Rob did touch on it, but they were here today. There was probably about 50 volunteers and folks from PSG Long Island. They were at the supermarkets giving out bags. They did some beautification work at all the entryways. So, you know, down the west end of by Nevada, Long Beach Road, and then over on the east end, so they planted some bushes. And then they also hand out 2,000 LED light bulbs. So I just, on behalf of the community, just wanted to again thank PSG Long Island for their commitment to not only Long Beach, but the environment. And with that, I'll call the first public hearing.
Yeah, first public hearing today is with warning to amend code of ordinances on the city of Long Beach regarding intentional release of balloons.
I'll start up. Oh, just gonna say that we have learned that scientists have established that this kind of balloons and the playful balloons are actually hurting and detrimental to the grid. I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Corporation Counsel Richard Barres for explanation of the statutory CFD, which will in turn explain what we intend to do about this problem.
So essentially, I guess in crafting this legislation, the idea was to make the intentional release of balloons something that needs to be determined and necessarily punished. We have a pretty basic scheme setting forth as a prohibition based for me, a person, non-profit organization, firm, corporation, and potentially releases and organizes the release of those balloons will become a violation. There are some exceptions. The balloons released on behalf of government agency for pursuit of government contract or scientific or ideological purposes. And the penalty for this particular violation will be $250. That's pretty much it. The last item on the agenda.
Anything from the councils?
Yeah, can someone just speak to enforcement? I think obviously all of us really believe that should be a priority. But how will we enforce this particular ordinance?
Well, as I understand it, basically, the city code and the charter provides for special officers to enforce its code. As you know, once the beach season gets underway, you have a lot of specials out there on the boardwalk, on the beach and the like, where these types of releases are likely to happen. I know the code does apply to the entire city. I think there'll be some consideration there as to how we enforce that. I'd be very concerned with the implementation.
So, the way I'm thinking of it is, I don't necessarily think that there's going to be a lot of fines written. I think it's going to give the special officers the tools to be able to see someone down the beach with 30, 40, 50 balloons and tell them, look, they're able to release them, and here's why. So hopefully, it's going to be a deterrent. We don't need the $250. We need them to not release balloons, right? So I think that's the ultimate goal. Anything else from the council? Alright, I'll hold it up for comments. Anyone care to speak on the item? Come up, sir. You have to come up and give your name and address.
Geraldson Lawski, Shore Road, Long Beach, New York.
One second. Todd, can you take the one? You're welcome, sir. Name and address for the record?
Geraldson Lawski, 52nd Shore Road, Long Beach, New York. My latest family sale of balloons and such usage in the city of Long Beach. Because I can't see a three-year-old accident, at least a balloon getting fined and like, all of this, and because of including the environment, it's been a long-term issue. That plastic bags give to the turtle population and part of their attention to the turtle.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
City of Long Beach. I think to make a point, I guess from a legal standpoint, you kind of did nail on the head. It's not about a three-year-old accidentally releasing the balloons. It's about someone intentionally organizing releasing balloons on that. Just for the matter of fact banned, there could be some implications there of liability, of like banning any type of... I can have a text up, which is something that has to be more limited.
I can't see a freedom of speech violation of that.
I wasn't able to find a freedom of speech violation. I'm just saying, I haven't seen something plugged into that.
Thank you. Sure. Good evening.
Hi, Laura Swan, 211 Lafayette Boulevard, Long Beach. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm so excited that we're entertaining this. It's almost as a highlight when we ban the ban. Recently, we did the International Coastal Cleanup, 2018. We were partnered with City of Long Beach, All Our Energy, Operation Splash, Hurley Surf Club, sponsored by Smooth Surf, Surf Rider Foundation, the literal society, and the Ocean Conservancy. We were given sheets to collect volunteer data. And if you don't mind, I'll just speak briefly. Ocean and waterway trash ranks as one of the most serious problems choking our planet. For more than an eyesore, a rising tide marine debris threatens human health and wildlife, communities, and economics around the world. The ocean faces many channels, but trash should not be one of them. Ocean trash is extremely preventable. And data you collect as part of that day was to say, the statistics were astounding, actually. We found 443 plastic and metal bottle caps. We found 423 cigarette butts, 205 single-use bottle cans, 130 plastic bags, 48 balloons, 363 unidentified plastic pieces. I think ideally, to leave you with this, is to say that we just need to educate people about the destructive effects of released balloons, and what they have on animals and people and the environment. And we need to strive to promote an eco-conscious lifestyle. And that's our goal as stewards of the sea. Thank you.
Mr. Swan? Good evening, name and address for the record?
Good evening, Amanda Moore, West End, Long Beach. I am here on behalf of Surf Rider Foundation to thank you all for seeing this devotee tonight. I've been the city wheel, this one, and have gotten a positive response from everybody sitting with Long Beach and every single councilperson on this. This really was sparked last summer after a very tragic event in Long Beach was compounded by a large swathe of balloons. Councilwoman Moore and I talked about it afterwards and realized that there is a lack of education. People didn't know that it was synonymous with littering. And we, and you guys passing this with the yes vote tonight gives us that platform to drive it into both minds and hearts that this glittering latex could violate this rating up to four years and my love, we never will. That's how they're made. So we are finding this in the trash, in the thousands, every time, I'm sorry, in the water, every time we do a cleanup. And getting this ordinance passed here will help us decrease the amount of rain we're finding in our environment and hopefully help us keep this county and the island alive. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Name and address for the record?
How's everybody? South Park, West Pine Street, Long Beach. Great, this is just a great event. This is a great long, glad we're here to support it. I'm going to represent Operation Splash today, because if you don't know, Operation Splash is a nonprofit organization that has seven boats and we go out to clean up the marshes, basically almost every day. What I did was I brought some stats that we have. They can tell you anything from, you know, balloons to plastic. But I'll just stick on balloons, because this is the topic here. And over the past four years, we've collected 6,179 balloons. Out of just the western days, and that's what's happening when people are doing this intentional release. But what people aren't talking about is the ribbons that are on the balloons. And it's sad to say that almost every marsh cleanup that I do and we do, we always find a dead animal that has been wrapped around this ribbon. The ribbon is really strong, and it doesn't break. It's just one of those things that's, you know, it's bad enough that the animals in the water think that the balloon is like a seaweed, you know, a squid or something like that. But then they get tangled up in it, the ospreys are hanging from it from there. So this, this is something that's a long time coming. And I'm so proud of Long Beach for leading the way every time on all of these environmental issues. And I can't thank you enough for all of this. And we're here to support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McNally?
Good evening, everybody. John McNally, 613 West Alhamb Street. I am 1,005% behind this. Great move by the council. I would just recommend to put some added teeth to it that you up the $250 fine, whatever arbitrary number you want, 1,000. The city could absolutely use the revenue, so that's my opinion.
Good evening.
Good evening, Sam Pinto, Long Beach. I also do support this measure, the intent, as well to hope that environmental effects will be beneficial to the community and the environmental community as a whole. I have a question about last year's plastic bag ban. I know it was a big topic, and sticking to this topic trying to do. Is there any performance measures or successes and failures, or any feedback to the community about how the implementation went on that?
Yeah, it's been wildly successful. I don't know the exact numbers, but I think CBS went from 200 cases to, oh, 800 cases to 200 cases of public bans.
They said they did 10 boxes of 1,000 bags a week, and now they do one.
It's about an 80% reduction if you're at all major stores.
Right, CBS, CBS is one of the biggest ones. You know, I guess, you know, they're the few, they're really the ones we really want to track up.
Okay, will there be any modifications to that now with the possible, future bag ban? Is the city going to modify it?
Our ban is actually, I think stronger or better than the one being proposed to the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak about the intentional release of balloons? No? Seeing no hands, I'm just going to ask the clerk, Mr. Fraser, to call the item. Close the year.
So I want this order to amend code of ordinances on the city of Long Beach regarding the intentional release of balloons. Can you just move these out from this item?
I will.
I will.
Lori, Lalo Mendel?
Yes.
Lalo Mendel?
Yes.
Yeah, just want to say a few words. You know, while balloons are used to really enjoy the moment, they have elastic impact on our environment. And we do know that birds and turtles and ducks and whales and all other animals commonly mistake these balloons for food, which in hawk or otherwise most likely kill them. So tonight, we're coming because we really care about this. We're not only trying to save our oceans, but we're trying to save all living things within those oceans. And so I want to take the time to thank Amanda Moore and Mitch White, not here, and Joe Iceman, and some other people who were there within the meeting with myself and President Arama, as well as members of the Surf Rider Foundation, and all the residents that are actually committed to doing this work, being environmentalists, and really moving forward with protecting our environment. I believe that tonight would take a major step in terms of communicating our commitment, our strong commitment as a city to protecting our environment. And I really look forward to the future conversations regarding educating our residents, because that's going to be the major step in terms of moving forward and moving this initiative forward. So I look forward to being a part of those conversations, and I hope that we will make education the priority. I think that will help to address the concern of enforcement. So with that, I vote yes.
Sure. I follow everything that you have said. I want to thank the members of the community who advocated for this. This is an important piece of legislation, and I'm happy to vote yes. But this is great to see once again that Long Beach is leading on this environmental issue. So again, I vote yes.
Yes, I too am very proud of the work we've done protecting our environment. We are on the front lines of protecting our environment here on the Bay Area Island. And, you know, a lot of folks that come down and do these intentional releases very often remember some of lost ones. And we all understand that and understand that pain. But to be able to do that maybe with flowers is a much better and beautiful way to remember those that we have lost. So I'm proud to vote yes. Thank you.
Our next item is a public hearing for bond warrants authorizing financing for the cost of fiscal year 2018-19 separation payments. Two or fewer veteran employees in the city from separation unemployment say the estimated total cost thereof is $400,000. Appropriating incentive after authorizing issuance and not to receive $400,000 bonds of sensitive financial litigation.
I second.
Ocean table, item number two.
Yes.
Yes. No.
No.
On to your regular challenges. I agree, this resolution authorizing the acting city manager to be responsible for the review of the source.
Alright, so for a very long time now, I personally, and I've advocated that the city has benefited from retaining a finance professional separate apart from the city controller, who's tasked with long-term financial planning and investments. In most organizations, the controller is the county county auditing professional who's responsible for managing that function. In the city, however, the role has sort of more into a CFO-type position, where the controller is really the only individual handling the budget side of the operation in terms of debt issuance, Long Beach planning, and the like. The issue stemmed from the fact that the controller is the one responsible for making sure that, well, the trade's on the time. It's also great, however, to have a financial planner who's charged us with a long-term financial vision and plan, which would surface now, right? While I had originally planned to include a new position in the outcome budget for a dedicated financial professional, I subsequently learned that our current financial advisors, capital markets advisors, or CMA, actually performs this function. We hold CMA internally in very high regard, having worked with them for the last several years, not only on the sale of debt instruments, but the determination of which debt instrument best meets our need at any particular moment. They have helped manage our relationship with our credit rating agency and helped us prepare for credit reviews. They have come to the city on numerous occasions, teach seminars to key staff on the intricacies of debt instruments. Most recently, they identified an opportunity to refinance our existing bonds, which will now save the city $100,000 for the foreseeable future. Therefore, in lieu of hiring a dedicated finance professional, we run the city about $150,000 by our estimates. The salary alone, for four fringes, we're actually able to repeat and hire firm for this function. So with that in mind, I, in the last couple months, developed a scope of work, which is incorporated into the body of the resolution. Just to go over that very briefly, what we want CMA to do is work closely with the city controller while reporting directly with the acting city manager to reconstruct the city's daily money management and financial problems on approaches in order to optimize return on investments and individual transactions, and to build the foundation for financial stability in the near term and growth in the long term. We want CMA to evaluate minor and major large-scale transactions from the perspective of a credit rating agency while balancing the need to provide essential physical services to residents and cash flow considerations. Also, we want CMA to recognize short- and long-term investment opportunities that may otherwise go unnoticed by accountants and auditors, and to provide a finance counterpoint in situations where opportunities are identified but disregarded due to other pressing financial concerns. We also need CMA to participate in regular meetings with all major departments and DPW division leaders to evaluate emergency and routine transactions, and review solutions to problems, and the city's approach to future problems in a manner that stresses financial conservation. Lastly, we need CMA to help determine the optimal financing mix for large-scale transactions. For example, cash from the operating budget, borrowing, capital plan, grants, etc., and developing detailed plans with benchmarks to help key personnel follow through on objectives. In other words, they're going to be dealing with higher workforce studies and analysis. But more in a general sense, what CMA will do is fill a hole that's existed here for a long time for a finance professional. I'm sure many of us have accountants and many of us have financial planners. Those are two separate people, two separate skill sets, and two entirely different disciplines. If we could all have those, have access to those people as individuals, it's certainly fair to say that the city deserves a shot at a financial planner with a $95 million budget every year. And after this item masters, it's a long-term financial plan and fix for the city, and that's what's designed to do. And with that, I strongly recommend it.
Okay. I would just like to say that we were fortunate enough to have the acting city manager, I guess DC brought CMA in to meet with the council, most of the council. And they gave us a presentation as to the scope of their work. They've also showed us some documentation of what kind of report they've done for the city of Rochester and how they helped them with their long-term planning. So it was quite impressive. And I don't know if any of the council has any other questions plus that, to ask Mr. Agostizzi, or any other comments, before I go to the public.
I personally want to thank you for bringing them in to meet with us. And I think this is an important step for future planning to ensure that the city continues to take steps to be financially stable in terms of both our release rating, as well as just the operations of the city as a whole, since they're, they intend to do the analysis of all of the operations and allow us to prepare properly for the future, both financially and as well as where there is potential waste.
Can you speak to the fee of the $10,000?
Well, for the first two months, that falls within the city manager's procurement threshold. Up to $20,000, that's why the cost is less for the first two months. They will be here for the end of May regardless. They just won't have a chance to really get any behind their sales, from manners speaking. But in terms of what we need for this budget presentation, we anticipate it to be very useful for the next few months. And that's why the cost is low for those two months, so we can bring it in. And that's why the cost is low for those two months, so we can bring it in funded to city managers' procurement threshold.
All right. How will we ensure that the city council will receive reports from this particular group of CMA?
Well, it's going to be, sometimes it's going to be on a day-to-day basis. Right now, for instance, CMA, one of the first things we tested with this week, actually, was the performance known as a bond lease analysis, which is we're contemplating the purchase of new sanitation vehicles. And initially, and you'll see this in the upcoming proposed budget, we hadn't anticipated a lease. And CMA is sort of steering us away from it. They believe it's going to be, it's going to be, provide a big cost of things to do a buy bond, which is simply reduce a number of years on bond. That would be definitely normal in terms of the probable period of use of this or BPU. That's important in the sense that it would allow us to sort of reap the benefits of a lease also in terms of turning over the trucks. So as you're sure, you've seen the trucks on the street now, they're horribly in condition. They weigh out, but they're useful. And we're trying to, we're trying to put them on a seven-year cycle for replacement. So we initially thought a lease would be a better idea, but in the next day or so, we anticipate CMA returning their first piece of work product. And that's something I'll vote in the council periodically. Also, along those lines, you know, I'm glad you mentioned this during my presentation, but as the council is now aware, the entire sewer consolidation project is now beginning to heat up again. And we expect substantial project, process, progress rather, in the next few months, CMA actually has experience with the financial, from the financial side of its transactions. So that's going to be a more of a flowing series of reports that's voted with the council as they're generated. We have legal help, we have environmental help, we have operational help, but we have no on the finance side to help with the city's largest transaction. So it's not just those isolated transactions that we'll be hearing about. They're going to be doing comprehensive work with analysis also. And that's for budget planning purposes for next year. But in that sense, actually, it just elaborates even more. We expect in the next few months, the financial restructuring report to come out with their report. This will be a more granular type report, in-depth version of what we expect to see from the financial restructuring report. Another thing I forgot to mention during my presentation is that I've been punctual with the financial restructuring report about CMA. And they've expressed enthusiasm about this concept. And they tend to be indicating to me that they intend to put this up to the corporate board where they need, which could help defray some CMA's actual costs. But they've indicated that they're eager to see them do something like this. So I'll mention that as well.
I just have a question, Ashley. Do you anticipate any of CMA's work product during the estimated time?
Well, for this, the one I just mentioned, the bond basis?
No, no. So they've retained the $10,000 a month so far. They just started the work. When do you anticipate getting their first work product?
This week on the bond basis.
Is there any hindrance in our waiting to see what that report is and the quality that we're seeing in this realm? In other words, is there any need for us to vote on this now as opposed to waiting to see the work product and the suggestions?
Well, we're very familiar with their work product internally, as I mentioned during my presentation. I think the detriment is that, like any, like anything else, who's to say what's going to happen in a few months from now? We, I think that we have this, this plan in place to allow CMA to sort of develop some momentum. So that's a problem, is that you wind up waiting and it puts us in almost limbo. And it certainly puts CMA in limbo also. And also, not to mention the fact that I believe that credit rating agencies are very eager to make this happen, hopefully before the budget, so they can present a long-term financial plan during the budget presentation. That's something we very much like the city. Granted, they do come under the threshold, but it's certainly going to be a lot more meaningful if they, if they know coming into that that they're going to have a year to work with the city to turn it around. So we're looking for immediate action for those in other races.
If I can follow, if they're going to give us their first work product this week, and they're already working, what would be the downside to voting on this at the next council meeting after we see that work product?
Well, I can flip the question once the benefit also. I don't see necessarily, why do you? Is there a point to push them up to tomorrow what you should accomplish today? Will we all know the city desperately needs? I don't understand. This is, this is not a stranger. The CMA has been here for years. They just refired our bonds. We know what they're capable and we know what they do. What is, what is the benefit to the delay?
Should I just ask a question? So we're voting on, in essence, guaranteeing them 10 months at $12,000 a month. Because two months over $10,000.
Correct.
So we're committing to that before we see the work product.
Again, you've seen CMA's work product for many years. We're totally familiar with it.
But is it, it's a completely different work product that's related to sale of bonds? This is as a financial advising capacity. I guess what I'm trying to understand is, they're already working. Just voting on this at the next council meeting slows nothing down. So I'm trying to understand the downside of seeing the first report delivered so we can gauge what we're getting for our money.
The downside is that I'm trying to get this company to replace the whole budget presentation so that they have the security of knowing that they can be here and have credit rating agencies that are watching the financial restructuring board, that's watching those that are making this process seriously. And that will have a long-term plan. Now, if you want to get them into the budget process without that form of security, I believe you're taking a risk. I don't see the benefit of doing tomorrow what you can accomplish today. And what we all know, what the city desperately needs is long-term financial plan and planning and management. Now, as far as sample work, that's readily available. CMA has actually provided this with some of that already. I can provide more in Rochester, Rochester, and I still have it.
I see the market goes for us $10,000.
So just to go back into the paraphrase, what you're saying, you're basically saying that tonight, we're really voting on this resolution to make a statement to the residents that we're committed to moving forward with our goal, which is fiscal health, for the most part. That's why we're making this a step.
Yeah, the residents, the credit rating agencies, everyone who's watching, a lot of people.
So I just want to ask something else that's related to this. During the presentation with CMA, one of the key pieces was the idea of a consecutive plan, that we would have a plan, that we can then communicate that plan to the residents. So I guess my question would be, because that plan is connected to the mission and the vision of our city, when do we anticipate as a council, when will the council have the opportunity to begin that process, to have those conversations with the CMA if this does pass this evening?
The answer is as much or as little as the council wants. They're going to be on-site once a week. That's the ideal time to talk. And I can speak with them almost every day for the last week.
I think they said that they would try to get us together, but if not, they would meet with us individually.
They'd have.
Yes, absolutely. So in other words, if we vote on this this evening, we can actually expedite that process so that the council can get involved in the process.
Right, which I think is a very important tool during the budget process as well. You have CMA add your disposal as you're reviewing the budget.
But correctly for one, CMA is already being paid. They're already working for the city. All this is doing is extending what they're currently doing for the full year. It's just a no-go. But they're already working.
There, yes, they have, they just already work. That's correct.
So we have an opportunity to see their work before we commit to them for the full year, if we wait and vote on this in the evening. And they'll still be here for the budget here because they're already being paid.
Oh, they'll be here. That's true. But it's, they're going to be, I actually, they'll absolutely be here. But, you know, if, if we, I was going to ask you something.
Okay. So based on that, I mean, before committee spending $140,000, we're going to have an opportunity to see that work. So voting on it at the next meeting hinders or slows nothing. So I'm going to make a motion to the table this until the next meeting. Yes?
Yes.
Say yes. No.
No.
I'd like a motion to amend the actual amendment, the resolution. That's what I'd like to do on the floor with the hopes that we can come to some agreement, because we do need to move this forward in terms of fiscal health and accountability. We do need to have that conversation with the CMA sooner or later. And to wait till next month, right before we make decisions about the budget, I just don't think at this time, that's a good decision. So I'm willing to, at the bottom here, it says that we're at the term of one year, so it's an outright term of one year. I think that we can just revert that to moving forward up until the end of the budget season, which would be the June 30th. So that we can at least see something now in advance. And then we can come back and we can review the services.
Ashley, I'm just getting that. What is specifically that you're proposing?
So here, it states that the $10,000 per month through May 31st of 2019, why can't we just stop right there and just end it at whatever, June 30th, 2019, and not increase the $12,000 per month to remain with the terms contract to term? Because we, as a council, we haven't engaged in business with them individually. This is information that you've worked, obviously, in your capacity, but we haven't. And I think that's probably the question that's on the floor in terms of what Councilwoman Mandel has raised. We're not familiar with the intimate workings of the CMA. We only know them based on the presentation that was given, which is really addressing the expansion of the scope of their work. So that's, that's something that I'm putting on the floor for consideration.
Okay. I mean, I'll have to go back and talk to CMA about, if those revisions, I don't anticipate there being much pushback. I can't guarantee it, but certainly it's the council's right to authorize average wishes in this resolution. So.
But if it's already in your budget and never be higher, is my understanding that they're going to remain anyway?
Until the end of, correct, currently.
Until the May 31st. So the amendment would extend that until the June 30th, if it's needed, because we're working currently on the budget.
No, I understand. It's just, of course, they're going to want to pick that one. That's, that's what I'm trying to clarify. But you can absolutely authorize it. No question.
So just so long, clearly, we're talking about changing it from the term of one year to the end of the term fiscal year.
Correct.
Just a question. You're changing where at with the resolve?
We leave it at the resolve.
Right. I mean, at the end of the day, there's another month.
Correct. Well, the end of the fiscal year might be more comfortable in terms of just extending it to the remainder, because apparently that seems to be the issue on the floor. Correct. End of fiscal year. Yes. And the resolve and where at.
Yeah. That's the proposal.
So in both the where as paragraph and the resolve paragraph, you change the wording for term of one year to until the end of fiscal.
Correct.
That's, that's the proposal. That's correct.
Can you just read, it's a wall on this panel.
It's going to be changing the wording of the where as and the resolve clause where it says for term of one year to until the end of fiscal year.
This, I'll say.
Yes. While I appreciate the idea to try to sort of compromise, we have this, it still doesn't alleviate my concern that I'd want to see work product before voting. Adjoing in the understanding that fiscal planning is needed for the city, I would just see a company that's already been paying $10,000 a month, issue their report, which is imminent within the meeting, and then make a decision. And if that decision is to remain the year, I can understand. So unfortunately, I appreciate the, although I vote no.
Yes. I, I too appreciate the attempt at a compromise and to put something that was political to all the members. But throughout the budget process and as recently as the last meeting, there were residents that stood up and asked for a long-term financial plan and long-term financial planning. And that would go beyond the end of this fiscal year. We want this, or a financial planner to be part of the budget process, but we also want it going forward to plan for the out years and have a four-year, five-year, whatever it is, long-term plan for investments, for borrowing, for bonding, for paying down debts, for services provided. And I think that just cutting them off so quickly at the end of June prevents the long-term planning that we want. So for that, I vote no.
I totally agree with that. The whole purpose was to at least allow for them to see something and then to continue that.
I understand.
So as I said earlier, they came in, we asked them questions for quite a couple of few hours. They forwarded us the reports that they made for Rochester specifically, also ISOP. It was in-depth and thorough. And then there was the reports that Moody's subsequently gave the city of Rochester after they did work with CMA. We've worked with CMA for a long time. While I do also appreciate trying to find common middle ground here, I think we need the long-term fiscal plan like the residents have been asking. And I vote no. Is there anything else from the council before I open it up to the public? Okay. Mr. Manles of the public that would like to speak on the CMA. First hand, I see is Mr. Pinto.
Good evening, Sam Pinto, Long Beach. Just a few questions. So this is going to be a replacement of a full-time controller, or is this going to be an addition?
No, addition.
An addition. So are the rules or the responsibilities of current controller going to go down? Are they going to change, modify the conditions up with the controller's post due? Because I always was under the impression the controller is a partial financial advisor.
Well, let me just say this. You know, when our now accounting consultant, Chrissy, who's in that role, she's, she was full-service in terms of CMO responsibilities, which would encompass both the accounting responsibilities and the financial advising responsibilities. But the controller is an accounting and auditing position by its very nature. That's the person who's literally making sure all the bills get paid. That is a 110% full-time job. We work on just a normal full-time job. And, you know, when, when the controller has to move over before this law, this financial function, there's an opportunity cost for that. And it's all, it's all the, it's the normal, you know, it's the normal flow.
Is my time being used now or not?
It is. So I would get to the answer, no. Sorry. I have more questions. I'm sorry. And the answer is to the question of whether to replace the controller now or to supplement the controller.
Is Ms. Hightower going to stay on, retained as a consultant as she has been? Or is she no longer staying on?
Yes.
She's also staying on?
For the foreseeable future, for now, yes.
How does this compare to the recommendations that we've been getting from our outside auditors, giving us long-term suggestions and comparisons that we haven't been following at the state compter's office, where we've been getting recommendations that we have not been following? And the best practices that we have not been following? These guys are coming in as advisory board at $12,000 a month. And they're giving all these recommendations. Meanwhile, we have the state, we have an outside order CPA company. We even have residents and high school kid running circles around the fiscal policy and this and this.
That may be, but there's absolutely no one providing a long-term financial plan. They can find, the orders.
City manager and comptroller.
There's no firm right now that's for, like, any.
Yeah, but we have a city manager, hopefully a comptroller can do those.
We've never had a.
Not financial vision, long-term vision, working for more than a three or five-year strategic plan. I mean, we're not expecting a 20-year plan here. I mean, if we did that, we'd have the same headaches we had with. Using their final money.
Well, just typically a five-term.
A five-year plan. A five-year plan.
Because that's exactly.
That's long-term, medium-term.
That's what we just wanted to say. That's what they can do.
But we're not, okay. One more suggestion.
Initially, they're going to be preparing a five-year plan. That would probably expedite. But this, this function has never been performed in this city.
To go, to couple with Mr. Mandel's concern, if we're hiring this company for a five-year plan, why would we not wait two weeks to see what their work is going to be? We also have.
We're very familiar with our work product. We also know the services that are accomplished within this particular package, because we've seen it with other.
I mean, I'm not challenging. I'm asking a question.
It's like people, you know, some people don't seem to want the city to succeed on a lot of their financials.
No, I do. I just, the question is that I've seen folks come in and I've also seen advisors. No, I do. I just, the question is that I've seen folks come in and I've also seen advisors be denied. Uh, but in closing, I think that over the last, I don't know how many months, seven, eight months, maybe even a year, individuals in, in this crowd of residents who include CPAs, people who are financial experts, even high school students who know a little about finance, have been giving advice and ideas to the council and the administration, which have gone ignored. So just maybe if you want to, if this does move forward, take a resident's financial advisory board that can also give local advice of experts, couple it together and maybe get the best of both worlds. Thank you.
Name and address for.
Eddie Varner. As Mr. Agostecy explains, CMA will be working with the city to find savings and to develop a strategic multi-year fiscal improvement plan. My first question is, under deficit financing, the city is required to submit a multi-year financial plan to the New York State Comptroller. Have we done, one, have we done this in accordance with the law? And two, will this CMA firm be providing a redundant service that we have already, uh, making a plan that we have already submitted? Also, I think the resolution should be amended to ensure citizen input will be considered as CMA is developing this strategic multi-year fiscal improvement plan. And that the report that CMA publishes should be available in full and mandatorily publicly released. My biggest concern though with this resolution is that we have many people who are willing to do this for free. There are many who attend meetings and understand the city's financial commission, but their recommendations and analysis have been ignored. But now, Mr. Agostecy wants to pay an outside firm $12,000 per month to do this? If the council wants this firm to consult the city, it should at minimum amend this resolution to establish a citizens' financial committee that will advise the city on financial matters. Financial concerns should be taken seriously and the consulting of citizens would be a step towards reform. Thank you.
Thank you for the conference study. I think, um, again, I've had the opportunity to meet with the CMA and based on their presentation, we might understand that a part of that five-year overall plan, uh, again, because they would be, they would be in consultation with the council and having interviewed us, having interviewed people who are part of the city. I think the recommendation, uh, in terms of a citizens group would come, would be a part of that five-year plan. At least that's the way that I would see it and that's something that I would actually recommend once that plan was created. So I, um, so I, I agree with exactly what you're saying. You do have to have, um, citizens' input. I think it's critical for us to move the city forward. But I think that a part of that presentation has to be comprehensive. And a part of that, that comprehensive plan is to conduct interviews and do inventory throughout the city and come back with a plan that would work for us to, to move the city forward.
Yes, specifically the resolution states, um, that it will be, um, speaking with department heads in the council, but I'm just asking to double ensure, uh, that citizens are, um, consulted. And also, does maybe our consultant, maybe our comptroller, maybe our state manager knows, have we actually complied with the law and submitted a multi-year financial plan to the New York State Comptroller?
We do submit every year to the New York State Comptroller, right? We do. And this won't be a duplication of services from, as it was explained to us and as I, as we understand it as, uh, acting city manager, Agostecy explained, it's something that we've never had in the city was a long-term financial plan. It would be augmentation and amplification of existing services, not duplication. Thank you. Anything else on the CMA?
John Lee, uh, the gentleman from Long Beach. Does the scope of this contract with CMA include an analysis of the past five years of how the budget has run in terms of what has always seemed to be quite a bit short-funded and something's always quite a bit over-funded? And you're always doing this juggling game at the end of the year where you're getting more funds? Do we have a, a long-term study of what happened before so that we know planning forward? We don't continue to have this game of, I'm not going to say this, uh, this play as possible. The, uh, the illusion of having splash funds because something's always over-funded that gets somehow easily available for the underfunded. Is that in scope of this? Do we have a historical study? So that we have at least an idea of how the budget should be formed and why it should be formed? And, and, and on a zero-based dollar basis, if they don't need, they don't care to put a buck or penny?
I can tell you that's certainly part of their evaluation. What you're talking about are trends basically.
No, that's not trends. That's the facts. I mean, you have, you, every year.
I think we're talking about the same thing, actually. We're talking about, about overdraws and whatnot and different, you know, shortages and expense overages and whatnot. But you want that and studying trends going five years back. They are, I don't know if they're doing a standalone evaluation. It's certainly something the council wants and they can absolutely ask for that. I know they're going to be evaluating it. It's your question.
Well, the thing, the thing is, is that if you're going to make a plan, you have to know the path that you travel.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And if you don't analyze the past, you're going to continue to do the same thing in the future. And then apparently is what's been happening. Because every year we seem to be, uh, you know, they show up the dollar short.
You're absolutely right. That's, they need to know that before they can figure out the root causes of the structural balance. Absolutely, 100%.
Well, I'm just asking if, if that historical study is going to answer, is it part of the scope? I mean, I, I thought, why not say, I often play it forward.
What am I saying?
I, I, I know how to make choices.
All we have to do is ask them to perform a formal study. They're evaluating that data anyway. That's what I'm trying to say. If you want to stand alone.
I don't, I don't, you know, you, you, you have, you have, you have, you had a New York State audit that talked about general performance. You need a department by department audit. Is this?
That's what they are doing.
Right, department by department audit. And if they're not doing it right, how do you fix it? And maybe, you know, whatever changes you have to make. This could be volumes of people and, uh, you know, less possibly? And, and maybe taking away some responsibilities that people or, uh, whatever they, they would have now to do things that they can't do now because, you know, historically they don't manage it correctly.
Right, and I think to your point, actually, what I want CMA to do, the way I've described it to the council is, I want them to serve as our departmental financial coaches. That's one of the things they could be doing during the onsite visits or could be sitting down with department heads and slowly having them then evolve into money managers. That's what we need.
Well, you know, like the utility, they get their rates based on their future expenditures. And they don't get the rates. And in the end, uh, and in the end, they, uh, if they don't spend the money right, they get penalized. And so to me, the taxes, well, I don't need them. The taxes are the rates. So if you don't get the money, then if you don't get the plan, I've got to give some back.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. Name and address for the record.
Michelle Na, Long Beach. Um, the CMA, is that the same company that is the far apartment?
No.
No, not at all?
No.
Okay, because they have the similar name.
I C M A.
I C M A.
I C N O.
Good evening. Name and address for the record.
Captain Elmer, Long Beach. Um, I would like to speak in answer to the question. Um, the choice here seems to me between, I believe we have a comptroller, which I didn't know. Uh, it seems to me there's a choice between hiring a permanent financial person for $150,000 a year or paying this company somewhere between $120,000 and $140,000, uh, a thousand a year. Um, it, I think it would be better to have someone who's here permanently that consultant. I think the money would be better spent, um, for permanently. And, um, you know, I think we did the budget last year without a comptroller. I could be mistaken. I'm not sure. Um, and that wasn't good. I'm not saying that's a good idea. But I think it would be better money spent to hire a person permanently. Um, you know, having been a permanent employee and been a consultant, there's more of a commitment, I think, for someone who's hired by the city. And in terms of benefits, I know, um, Commissioner Tannen found money in bonds that we have, you know, been given but not completely used. Um, maybe you could do something like that to find money for the benefits for this person.
So just a little, just a clarification. This, this company would not replace a comptroller. The search for a comptroller goes on.
Correct.
Still?
Yes.
Correct. Uh, Ms. Hightower has graciously been sort of acting as a consultant to the city in that capacity during the period of the search. This company would be more of a financial consultant to how the city's financial operations operate and less the day-to-day sort of bookkeeping and things like that that the comptroller does.
I still would say I think it would be better as a permanent employee. I mean, we've had these problems for at least 10 years that I started following it. Um, I, and again, I think the commitment of a permanent employee is much stronger than a consultant who you speak with like Paul Montzle.
Thank you, Mr. Leiter. Mr. Lester?
Where is this from? Long Beach. Um, I guess I come from a disadvantage of being on the school board for so long where this is the way things are done. You do long-term planning. I mean, and, and you have a chief financial officer that actually does long-term planning and you hire somebody who has the ability to do long-term planning. So you don't have to go out and hire an additional consultant on top of the people you're hiring. But I guess that's the way we do it. You guys, I guess, do differently. But my question is, you've been working with these people for years. Why did this idea just come up now? Why did suddenly now you just decide you need long-term planning? That, to me, is like a no-brainer.
Well, Rob, you've advocated for it for a long time.
Then why did it take so long? Oh, so he's, he's still not. That's true. But if he's advocating it, you guys weren't listening to him? If he's been advocating it for years, you guys sat here and said no? That's, that just makes no sense to me. But I, I feel like, no. Well, that's, that's exactly what I just heard. So maybe, you know, maybe the sound is different over here. I do have another question. I do have another question. In here, it talks about, well, reporting directly to the acting city manager. You're talking about a one-year contract, but the term is reporting directly to the acting city manager. Does that mean you don't anticipate having a regular city manager within the next year?
I don't think.
It's just odd wording.
I, I don't think that was being intended at all. And certainly, yeah, I, I think that is semantics. Certainly, if I'm replaced, they'll be reporting to the city manager.
Well, that, then why doesn't it say that? It's just curious. I, I agree with you. I'm just curious. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record.
Michael Laurie, Long Beach. David, if you don't mind, can you just hand that out to the council members? Um, I'd like to discuss, well, let me briefly say that, uh, whereas capital market advisors, um, on behalf of the city providing expertise in the services outlined above at a cost of $10,000 per month through May 31st, 2019, my suggestion is end month to month thereafter upon the vote of the council. So that at least gives dialogue and discussion that you would have. I'm not disputing that they're not talented enough. There have been quite a few times where council members are not getting monthly reports. I think Councilman Bendo, we talked about this a couple of months ago, where you had requested monthly reports and you were not getting them. And I assume Councilwoman Moore, you were not getting them either. So as far as sharing and discussing information, the question I have is, did all the council members meet with, uh, CMA?
No.
Councilwoman Moore, have you met with?
Yes.
Councilman Bendo, have you met?
Yes.
That leaves you, Mr. Mandel, I guess. Do you agree with that?
I did not. It was a meeting. The rest of the council attended. I was unable to attend. I did speak to acting city manager Agostecy after the meeting. He briefed me on everything that was shared at the meeting. I was given all the information that was presented at the meeting. I'm confident of that. I asked for some additional contact information, which I'm sure will be forthcoming. But my understanding is every other council member was in attendance.
Okay, those that were attendants, okay, and you were the only one. So you feel sufficient that you've gotten information?
I feel confident I was provided everything that was given at that meeting.
Okay, thank you. What I've given all council members is the footnote to this past June 30th financial statement. It says, which is something if you move forward on this, you really should have them look into it, is the recommended undersigned fund balance level of 5% of the normal prior year expenditures. When you dip below your policy, your fund balance policy, it says that in fiscal years where the city's undersigned fund balance falls below the recommended level of 5%, the city will develop a plan to replenish its undersigned fund balance by direct appropriation. I, I give that to you because you're, you're going through a budget process right now. You have a consultant and you all have full-time jobs and you're going to rely on a lot of information that's going to be prepared and given. There's going to be tough decisions made and they could be, you know, I could see a political decision going one way and a realistic financial decision going the other way, which would be the better way. I will wrap it up.
Thank you.
Just try to make certain that this year, you really look at overall ramifications. Looking forward to five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laurie.
Unfortunately, there's a, it's supposed to be. Um, long-term planning is very important. I have a question about my brief reading. Um, pulling out, well, no, the, the first go-around. I'm, I'm supportive of this.
No, I'm saying the amendment, though. I don't still want to.
Oh, okay. Okay, my question's on number three. Um, so this just kind of popped out at me. Um, when it comes to like a little development corporation, would, um, CMA be able to jump in and kind of help out to identify potential, like, whether it's, um, transferring for land, buildings or any kind of management of that? Because that's, that's immediately what jumped out at me. Because I feel like our development corporation, um, has, has really great talent. It brought it correctly. And, uh, I think that there have been, possibly some opportunities that have been missed. Uh, and that's, no, not this, I, you work very hard. We could call her three times a day. So is that what number three means? Like, would they be able to, to identify potential opportunities? Three little development corporations? And is it, is it okay for me to ask? Have you given, given any, for my thought?
I have an impression I do it then. I think it's, but I think it's an excellent one. I'm not sure about the scope of their experience at LDC specifically. Um, but now that you brought it to my attention, I see no reason why we wouldn't bring it up with that.
Right. So, I mean, these are incredible opportunities that we could be missing out on. And, um, I think that this is really important that we move forward, which is.
Great point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Leiter. Yes? No, I'm missing, I'm sorry. Name and address?
Nora Egan, Long Beach. Um, while I really look forward to the idea of the CMA coming in and doing a long-term plan, my question is, will they look backwards and make sure that everything has been run correctly over the last couple of years? For me myself, most importantly, the payouts, the calculations. And is that something that they would be tasked with?
I mean, they're tasked with the city's overall finances. Will they be looking backwards? Absolutely. In the opinion, that's their foundation, if you focus on. Obviously, payouts are initially, they're, they're. I think the main issue that they're going to be exploring in depth is how do we start pricing for payouts? Of course, a lot of it. They're looking at more in the macro sense rather than individual payouts. You know, that's being obviously audited by the comptroller and other agencies.
Right, because it's like the methods of calculations that they're really looking into. So CMA should be looking into that as well, especially over the last couple of years. And we don't know how long these calculations have been taking place in the city. And we don't know how much money is due back to us.
Well, you know, I guess we'll, we'll crush that ratio we come to. But certainly, I mean, one of the things, like, again, that is trying to figure out a way to address our structural imbalance such that we don't have to borrow or separation pay anyone, which is an operational expense. And one of the reasons that you've seen are credit rating decline.
Yeah? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes? Name and address for the record.
James Kirkland, Long Beach. Just to follow up on what Mr. Lester had to say, as a former consultant, we were usually called in when companies finally realized they had so much trouble they couldn't handle it. So it is an aid, not just the one thing you depend upon. So just to put it in perspective. But one of the things I want to know is, is this company going to be involved with any of the other areas within the city administration, such as employee utilization? We have the very top heavy employment here, the use of overtime, the control of fiscal controls regarding inventory purchasing, the staffing, the how the departments are structured in terms of the need for all of the people. We have too many bosses, not enough Indians, or too many Indians and not enough chiefs. I don't know if it's just going to be strictly focusing on the financial aspects or the entire operation of the government, which is contributing to the majority of our woes, not just one specific department.
It's the whole. I mean, they're going to be looking at everything. I mean, when you look at our budget, I believe approximately 80% of it is personnel-driven.
Yes.
So there's no way to study the finances without studying that workforce. A few concepts are now usually exclusive. They're intrudably linked, in fact. So yes, they're going to be doing comprehensive workhorse analysis. That's why they're getting it.
The EDP programs as well?
All of it.
All of it as well, okay. Because that, they've got some beautiful golden parachutes that I want to take with me down. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes? Mr. Gusler? Name and address for the record.
Good evening, Jay Gusler, Long Beach. Why are we using, first of all, don't interrupt me to the extent that you may wish to answer anything from my comments. Why the ICMA? Why the CMA and not the ICMA? The city had some sort of a falling out with the ICMA. Do we pay membership fees to the ICMA? Aren't the duties that are envisioned to be performed by the CMA under this agreement the same duties that the city manager should be performing or have historically performed? At the 130-19 meeting when Mr. Agostese was appointed, council members were on diamond, put a chorus of speakers to talk about Mr. Agostese's qualifications as the city manager, and generally portrayed Mr. Agostese as a person most capable of guiding a city out of its precarious financial predicament. I'm wondering what's changed? You know, if Mr. Agostese had the abilities that you guys will lach in praise on him about, why do we need this consultant? It seems like it's redundant. The company also appears, by your comments, to be the same company that sells the bonds on the city's behalf. Now, is it not possible that they would give the city advice as part of their planning process that would depend upon the sale of bonds? And if they found themselves in a position to recommend that the city solve a certain problem through further bonding, aren't they then steering commissions to their own company through their bonding service division? I think there's an inherent conflict here that the city is overlooking, and I think you should look elsewhere for a provider for these types of services beyond the company that they're also using for your bonding. And the other thing, to catch on from Mr. Agostese's comment about departmental coaches, what do the department have to do? What can the CMA do that the department heads can? And lastly, I think we're going to put the car ahead of the horse here. We should have a permanent comptroller before we worry about hiring consultants to give us advice on long-term financial planning.
I mean, obviously, those questions were handed down in rather speedy fashion, but the question is, the first question goes, what was the first question again, Mr. Gusler?
Oh, not ICMA.
Oh, ICMA, right. So, no, that was, we do math, we should use the ICMA. That's been the case for quite some time. That's the city manager. And there's another question about public culture's qualifications. There's no one who's had this level of financial expertise, or even back, certainly not none of my workers or none that I'm aware. But this is part of what I've identified as necessary. This is long-term financial growth. It's in its long-term interests. When you identify a need such as this in my profession, you bring in an expert and help handle the problem. And so it works, you know? And that's why they're being brought in.
Hello, John Johnson, 613 West Long Island Street. What I've heard from each of the council members, and I think everybody in this room, is that this is a service that is desperately needed in the city. I think this is something, I may not have been specifically hired a consultant to this, but this is something that all the folks behind me have been screaming about for years now. So I think it's good that the city is finally coming around and acting upon it. I have no problem with it being a consultant, because I think in and of itself, that is probably the best improvement thing to do. We don't need to pay for their health benefits, long-term, and retirement packages. But I am deeply disappointed in some of the city council members not allowing the too many superior time to accommodate the comfort level of the other city council members when it seems like it would be a whole harmless kind of situation. And that you wouldn't just wait for your work products, see how the council works with that work product, and then make the decision in two weeks. I don't see the real downside of that, and the unwillingness to accommodate the bill council members is disappointing at this point. Anyone else care to speak on the CMA long-term financial planning consults? Yes, in session.
Hi, Lee Heschel, Long Beach. I think all I really want to do is reiterate a couple of things that were said tonight. One is that we are not Rochester, and we are not Islip. And if you have the opportunity to try before you buy, I cannot for a minute imagine why you rejected John Vendo's idea of waiting, seeing the product that you got, and then make the decision. So that just seems foolhardy to me. Secondly, the words that I think it was Jay Gusler said, "winning the carpe for the horse." We don't have a comptroller. And I think, Ms. Agostese, you just said that the comptroller is a very different job than this financial advisor. You need a full-time comptroller. And Ms. Hightower has been here for a while as a not-full-time. She has a full-time job somewhere else. So what's up with the comptroller? You can't find somebody to become comptroller here. It just seems ridiculous after all this time. And then the final thing, really, is Eddie's idea of adding it to the resolution that citizens should be involved as well. Because there's an awful lot of things that go on up here that I think we have a lot of people back there who have the expertise, not just financial, but in many, many different areas. Get some citizens involved. They're free and they're smart. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak on the CMA long-term financial school? I don't see any hands. Next name?
I implore the resolution authorizing the acting city manager to enter a contract with Inwood Fire District for the performance of fire long dispatch services.
I just asked our fire commissioner, Mr. Scott Camus, to come up and just explain this to us. So brief synopsis. Thank you.
Good evening. We were approached by the commissioners of the Inwood Fire District to provide them dispatch services like we do presently for the Woodmere Fire District and the Lawrence here in Fire Department, as well as the City of Long Beach. We met with them. We already, like we said, dispatched for their neighboring departments. They will pay us for the first year, the same contractor we have with Woodmere that we go on early in the year, $28,000 a year to start. Our dispatches office is already manned 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The dispatcher is there anyway. This will bring in extra revenue, at the same time, give us a little extra money to give the dispatchers a little raise, as well as at times when it's busy, whether it's July, some weekend, or some large event, have the dispatches office manned with two dispatches at a time of the year.
Thank you.
As a reminder, all our dispatches off by town employees, they don't accrue any benefit lifetime.
Thank you. Any questions in the council?
Just one. You just mentioned, you know, potentially giving them a small raise, as well as potentially on what might consider to be peak days, putting additional staff in it. Do you anticipate those costs to exceed what Inwood would pay us?
No. The way I figured it out, there would still be over $10,000 left over from the $28,000 even after the raise and any additional power needed.
Okay. All right, any comments, questions from the public? Providing dispatch services for Inwood? No? Seeing no hands, no silence.
I implore the resolution authorizing the acting city manager to enter to a contract for rental of portable western trailers for the Ocean Beach part of the lowest responsible bidder.
I just asked Joe Farisio from TPW to give some rundown.
Thank you. This resolution is to award the contract for tent compensation to the 2009 summer season. The contractor is direct range, and the amount of the contract is $220,000. The relocation to the bathrooms is Neptune Boulevard, which will have an ADA unit, Long Beach Road, New York Avenue, and this contingency of one in Minnesota in case we do not get the new compensation to our contract employer. However, it is scheduled to be delivered May 14th, and it shall be according to the contract if we've done our employer. However, we do have the contingency in there to put temporary line in the vicinity option out there.
So, and this is covered by FEMA still?
This is covered by FEMA, that's correct.
I mean, that's covered by FEMA.
I mean, that's right. And certainly, I think you had sent us an email, you were, I'm sure, this about why the costs were so much higher than previous years. And one of the reasons for that is, two of the units, the one at New York Avenue and the one at Long Beach Road, are no longer tied into the Sancho sewer system because of the doom in front of the water war. Now, Long Beach Road has the New York in on the street end, on the actual street. And then on New York Avenue, it's going to be on the beach, but it won't be able to be tied into the sewer system anymore. So the actually physically have to be pumped out. So we estimated that it's going to be approximately 240,000 gallons of pump outs for the summer, and the price of the contract is $0.40 a gallon. So that comes out to $6,000. So that's why I take that out of the, you know, the area of Long Beach Road. And we actually sent a letter a few months explaining this, that this wasn't typical of last year's summer, because there's a lot of the sewer system.
And they give the bathroom reversible as well?
Yes.
And with the, just one question, sorry. And would the temporary, were we not going to have a permanent bathroom in place at Minnesota, would the temporary line be reversible as well? Just would we be able to be reversible as a temporary unit and then?
Right now, with this $225,000 number, that's actually budgets for summer at Minnesota. However, it's really $5,000, potentially one month. So all that's part of this, it's really one night fun.
Is this going to be a last summer with temporary bathroom socially?
No, we intend on putting the bids out. We'll likely have quarters in New York Avenue and have two more in a couple of months. I hope you'll be ready in the summer. So hopefully this is what I saw.
Hopefully, okay.
Why are we putting an additional unisex bathroom at Neptune in addition to the trailer that's being put there?
Because just, from the other, there's an ADA unit and there's actually a, just specified man stalls and.
Well, the point is, there's going to be, here, there's going to be at Long Beach, Neptune, New York, and then with an additional, with one ADA unisex bathroom at Neptune. So the way it's written, I read that to mean there's going to be a trailer plus an ADA unisex.
Yes. It's just an ADA and.
Well, okay, but the rest of it, it says four trailers, but it's giving three locations.
Right, so there's two at, one is ADA and one is not ADA.
So there's two at Neptune, that's what I was trying to say?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
There's two, right. One is ADA and one's not.
Okay, that's what I was trying to say.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
And then, has FEMA been reversing this?
I actually want to, just so I'll give you a little background on that. Just so you know, to date, through 2015, we've reversed $370,750. We submitted the reversal for 2016, we moved out $121,571. In 2017, we moved out $90,000. 2018, we expanded $161,777 and not put it to reverse with that yet. There's a reason for that. We have to put it, it's called the scope of work change, for the additional money. We do have an extension in place from U.A.R.I.D. through the summer. We requested an extension December 31st, 2019, on January 3rd.
So generally, we have been successful getting reversed?
Oh, yeah, we've been successful. But the process of this is very lengthy. And there's no guarantee as far as this coming summer.
But historically, we have been successful getting reversed. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions or comments from the public? Mr. Dean?
Please correct me, I'm sorry. We're going to install temporary bathrooms at New York Avenue in one other location because we're not going to be able to hook it up to the sewer system which we have in the past. Is that correct?
Right.
And now, in order for us to hook it up into the sewer in the future, you're saying?
No, we can't hook it up right now.
In the future, I'm saying.
We can't be literally doing.
Because we know that we don't have a. Say it?
There'll be no temporary use in the future.
And how are we not going to make the temporary unit in New York Avenue not temporary in the future?
Because we're going to have a permanent unit there.
And how is that going to be, all right, what I'm trying to say is this, we're not, we're not, we have a temporary unit this year because they built the domes. Didn't we know the dome's going to be there? Why didn't we do the piping before they built the domes? Doesn't that, doesn't that make it more difficult to do the piping because we already have 20 feet of dome? This is about planning and execution at the least cost possible for the current time and the future time. And for you to put underground piping under the domes and under the street, you're talking about rebuilding the street, you're talking about, you know, what do utilities do? They got to get something, this is not going to be cheap. But you could have put piping in if somebody said, we're going to have a bathroom here. You know, that's the mark. Piping could have been put in there, but it built the dome. Piping, type of putting it, let them build the dunes, we got our things taken care of. And then you just pipe it in. And you wouldn't have a temporary thing here, you'd have a permanent thing here.
The reason that we have a temporary one is not because of the, of the piping. The reason that we have, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason we have a temporary one is that the permanent ones are not complete. We won't have temporary bathrooms, not having anything to do with because the pipes were, we're not there, or because the sewer.
Well, it's right there.
You ask a question, I'm just answering your question, not. Once we have the permanent comfort stations prepared and completed, we won't need, that's why we're saying we won't need it another year, because we'll have a permanent.
No, I understand what you're saying.
In order to make a permanent thing, you have to have a sewer line and a water line that goes underneath the doom and back.
And Mr. Ferrizio can answer. Why was that?
If we extended that pipe, please, that would be an expense, which would really make no sense extending that money.
My jokes are.
We could have extended the existing pipe where it is right now under the doom, all the way to the beach where we're going to put the temporary trail, but we'd have to pay for that, which would be very expensive.
And it's going to be in a different location, right? The temporary bathrooms versus the new, it's completely different location.
Ironically, the new bathroom, which we've been down there, they're building, the 30-foot wall, walk over at New York, we're all going to tie into that existing Santerre sewer system that we previously used for temporary trails, that's under the doom.
Right.
But we're not doing it this year because the temporary trail is.
Right, but is the pipe currently ended underneath the doom?
Correct.
And so, where's the bathroom?
The bathroom is going to be south of that, closer to the ocean, like south of the.
So, it's going to be past where the doom ends on the beach side.
Correct.
All right. So, all I'm saying to you is that the pipe is there, you needed 20 more feet of pipe.
No, Mr. Dean, what you're missing is, it didn't make economic sense to put that 20 feet of pipe in for one year. Because what's happening is the new bathroom, the permanent one, is going to be in a different location. It's going to be up on top of the doom, whereas this one is on the beach. So, it didn't make sense to spend the money to put in that 20 feet of pipe just to use it for one year. The expense wasn't warranted. It was easier just to put in a traditional bathroom trailer that they pump out rather than hook into a source.
So, at the same place for the temporary bathroom, the permanent one is going to be there, is that where?
No, no, they're in different places.
All right, okay, so, so what I'm trying to say is that, where, where's the plan to tie in the new permanent bathroom in the future? Do you?
It will, it will tie into the existing pipeline. It's, it'll be up on top of the doom and it will tie in to the existing pipeline, which I guess runs on the New York Avenue.
Right now, it's under the doom.
So, once they build, they'll walk over and put the bathroom in place, they'll dig out the pipe, connect to it, and then hook it into the source system.
Mr. Dean, I think what you're asking is actually what you're probably doing just.
Right, 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 but it just seems to me that, you know, you kind of had the pipe there, right?
You could have missed that paperwork.
It was one way to dig it out, put it in, and the house was taken up.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Anyone else on the temporary bathrooms? Yes, Paul Lachette? Joey Moon? State House?
Allison Lachette?
Thank you.
There's just one unisex bathroom. I'm curious if there's a way that we can have less gendered bathrooms and include more unisex bathrooms, if you're aware of doing that, maybe altering the trailers we're getting. In addition, are there going to be changing stations in some of these bathrooms? And then the third, the third part is, I'd really like this council to consider making sure that we have menstrual products available in our bathrooms. And tampon dispensers, this is an actual, you understand what time to dial, right? This is an actual, like, bathroom rights and access to menstrual products in our public bathrooms. In addition to that, having proper dispensers, I think I talked to Scott, what's his face in the back, about this while ago?
Commissioner.
Commissioner Camons, sorry. That things like tampon dispensers can, and sanitary baths, we flush, can really cause crisis for bathrooms. So, I think having proper dispensers in the bathrooms are important. And can we make certain that we're allowing people of all sexual orientations to have proper access to be able to use a bathroom?
Certainly, it's an area that's out of my expertise, but I'd like to certainly speak to the Senator.
Okay.
These, these units are all made new for this application, direct range makes them, so we can have that discussion.
How does a, how does a dispenser install them?
Right, exactly.
And if they're the same as the ones previous years, it's like a front area, but it's not really a changing area, but I suppose each stall can be used as a changing area?
I would, I would guess, but it's definitely a conversation that I could have, because they all have a budget just for, I think, some, some split this season.
Okay.
Cyber change, cyber change is not like changing at that.
Okay, but we also have to be careful in terms of the tampons, because they're also really just dangerous for the environment. So, we can just look into it, there are environmentally friendly tampons that can be used, because the tampon continues to, we continue to find that in our ocean, and that's a major issue. So, we, we just passed one tonight because we're trying to be environmentally conscious and we don't want to go back and do that, repeat the same issue with the bathroom. So, thank you for, for.
Thank you. Anyone else on the temporary bathrooms? Mr. Lester?
Well, Lester from Long Beach. I know you've heard this so many times from me before, but I wish we could find a way to get more bids to serve a big project, and we only got two bids, which is better than one, which we normally get, but I just wish we could find a way, because the more bids you have, the better that deal you're going to get. I do have a question, though. The total cost is $220. It's $195 for the four bathrooms, and then $5,000 a month for the other bathroom if it's not completed by the end of May. So, you have June, July, August, September. That's $20,000 on top of $195. Comes to $250. Who gets the extra $5,000?
Joe.
That's why, just one question.
No, it says, it says, immediately. It says, if not completed by Memorial Day again, that's the end of May.
It would, but I have to think.
Another question, why would they remove the trailers?
We'll just be clear, the intent is not to use, the intent is not to have a trailer at all ever in Minnesota. So, the total price is $195,000. We put in a contingency, if there was concern that it would not be delivered by the fourth inch that conference says, it would not be completed. So, at the worst case scenario, this, there should be no, I mean, worst case scenario, it would be $1,000. So, that pay would be not $195, but $200,000.
It was also my understanding, $195,000. Then you. No, that included, the $195,000 is my understanding, included the, the reason why Minnesota's more than 10 years past is not just the rental, it's also the removal. Right, so the extra money in the $20,000, we will see.
No, that's not the question. The question is just on the Minnesota Avenue. Minnesota, you don't get the trailer. You don't get the additional trailer unless it's not completed by Memorial Day, you get it. Memorial Day, you get it since the end of May, $5,000 a month. You have June, July, August, September, four times five is $20,000.
They're incorporated, they're incorporated, they.
It's next, in the event.
But if you know it says it's only if not completed by Memorial Day, so you're paying $5,000 and you're not getting it?
If we get it, FEMA's going to pay full month for it, if we didn't.
It would be incorporated if it was less.
And would it say that for all of September or does that delay the date?
All September.
It's not going to be.
Thank you.
We all know.
Anyone else? Yes, Mindy.
Hi.
Sorry, David Andrews.
I'm Mindy Duvall, Long Beach. Could you just tell me a little bit about the ADA restroom? Is it just one bathroom?
Yes, it's one, with two trailers located at that location, one is the ADA and one is not.
Okay, so I guess my question is, why is there just one at Neptune?
Yes, it's one, with two trailers located at that location, one is the ADA and one is not.
Okay, so I guess my question is, why is there just one at Neptune?
At Long Beach Road, we're putting the, the new bathroom on the street side, and we were putting on reset like we typically did, so now there's no way to access it safely for someone with a disability. Same thing in New York, now it's going to be on the beach, all the stuff will doom, so if we put an ADA unit there, there's no way to safely access that unit. That's why we're not putting ADA units.
Okay, you said, where are the other ones?
There's one at Neptune.
Right.
There's one at Long Beach Road, and there's one at New York.
Okay. All right, okay. So, my, so my second question is here is, why, how in the world is there going to be one restroom in the ADA? That is, that just.
Remember, all the other conversations on the water wall are only just for the five more on the water.
I understand, when you're ADA, you need to, when you need to use the restroom, the last thing that you want to do is start searching for the bathroom, and the fact that you're putting these restrooms on the beach is like, is like a miracle to someone who has a disability. So, I just think that maybe there's, you could put, if you're going to put tampons in, and you just said you can recreate it, I don't know what the word you used, I don't know what the words in your mouth, but you could definitely put two restrooms, you have two ADA restrooms in.
Well, certainly not a risk to put an additional bathroom, the problem is accessible, accessible, be accessible.
Okay, make it accessible, make it accessible. You have to, you can create a reflection, just about open up your mind and service. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So, so, just to reiterate.
I'm really not, I'm not okay with this answer.
Right, right, so, no.
It's okay, I'll try, I'll try.
So, what, why is it a problem putting?
Now, previously it was on the beach where they're doing this. Now, Long Beach Road is going to be on the street end. So, basically, there's no way to have it accessible from someone on the beach. You have to, get on the water wall, get on the ramp, get on the corner, go on the pavement, get to the location. So, it's really not conducive to putting an ADA unit, same thing on the beach at New York, it's going to be south of the doom now.
Okay.
South of the doom, let's say it's, it's random to the beach. So, if you want, if you want to have an ADA unit there, you have to make sure it's accessible. You can't put an ADA unit there, you're not going to have safe means for the passenger to get there. And I'm not saying it can't be done, but we're just, right now, unless you put only that's.
There it is, it will be back.
I mean, I think it's possible, for sure.
I just said back, there it is.
So, so.
It will be back, perfect, thank you. See?
So, maybe we can explore, if we can put handicap.
We also, we also, we could, I think we have the $220,000, I think, we're talking here, $20,000, something to take.
Okay.
If we were to investigate that, the trailers that weren't previously intended to be ADA compliant, will they have stalls in them that are of the size needed to comply?
The one that's in New York.
Right, but the others, would this, those stalls be?
If we put it there, yeah, sure, I mean, I wish.
No, in other words, the Long Beach Road and New York Avenue, okay, so if we wanted to make those ADA compliant somehow, will be matched and a ramp will have, we'd also have to have larger stalls installed in those units as well, correct?
No, it's a separate, distinct unit, so you would have another trailer, $5,000 a month.
Oh, we couldn't incorporate a larger stall?
No, we would be another trailer at $5,000 a month, and we would have to provide access to it.
Is the ADA one, like, is one shot?
One, so, we have those four trails, two of them are at, two are, two of the trails that.
We can't take the traditional ones ADA compliant.
So, we would have to authorize another unit at either New York or Long Beach Road to provide access to it.
I mean, like, Long Beach Road makes sense.
I don't know, we could certainly ask the vendor to do that.
Okay.
So, maybe, since we're not going to be using all the money in Minnesota, do you ready to, to do with that $20,000? I think it's going to be $220,000.
So, could you work up some?
I feel that we'd be able to do that, I have to.
He knows the Agnes City manager and the council.
Would the council prefer Long Beach Road or New York?
I have to look at, I need to look at the maps when I can see where all the ADA, ADA restrooms are located, and just look at the entire scope, and then I can make a good decision.
Because if you just, when you spec it out, it just gives the most options for flow and.
I'll speak with the city manager, the trainees, and what would be, is it way accessible?
New York Avenue is going to be on the beach.
New York would be.
Also, you would have to be. On the beach road, there's only, on the north side of the water wall, on that street.
On the street. So, on, on the beach side.
So, theoretically, you could put one right there, and it is ADA compliant, it shouldn't matter if it didn't access, but if you were.
New York's going to be very comfortable, because we have a ramp now that's for the payloads, that goes forward, that was just built.
Right.
So, you'd have to, you'd have to wait.
Should pass over there safely.
Come on, come on, so Long Beach Road.
Okay, well, we'll look at both locations and.
Absolutely.
Ms. Ford? Ms. Ford? David Andrews for the record, thank you.
Nice one, sorry, Long Beach. Right now, I thought I had this whole set, but now I am confused. So, we're going to have temporary bathrooms currently for this summer season, correct? And which of the locations, I guess, are going to be Neptune, Long Beach, Grand, I mean, New York, and Minnesota, correct?
Minnesota is only a contingency right now.
Because we're hoping that it's permanent, okay. So, the temporary bathrooms that you're putting in, two of them are going to be on the south side of the dunes, and one is going to be on the north side.
The one at Neptune is going to be along, on the street end, Long Beach Road will be north on the street end, and New York will be south on the beach.
Okay, so then, so then the north side ones will be handicapped accessible, you know, built.
Only one at this ADA is accessible now, it's the one.
All right, so then, so now the bathrooms that are currently on the water wall with the concession stands, are they all ADA compliant?
Yes.
They are, okay. So, then, but on the beach side at New York Avenue, why isn't that handicapped? Because I think that Mindy and Allison brought important information in regard to that the beaches aren't supposed to be accessible. You know, to remind you that you are accepting, federal money, okay, federal money does compel you to follow the laws, okay, the laws clearly state that when you accept money, that you have to make it accessible to everybody. And I understand when you're trying to save money, but, you know, even to spend, you know, $5,000 additional money or to look for a trailer or some sort of temporary bathroom that can have ADA compliant stall within it, because I think it's very, very important. And I also urge you that, when you do this, that you take signage and you make it quite clear to everybody who comes, whether or not they live here, visit, or whatever they want to do, that it's clearly marked that these locations are marked, that they are handicapped accessible comfort stations, because we have so many people that need this type of accommodation, you know, and also, like, for people who have young children, you know, it's scary when you have to send your child in, either likes having a unisex bathroom or a family bathroom, but I urge you that, I think you really have to look. And I know that it's. or a family bathroom, but I urge you that, I think you really have to look. And I know that it's, it's very daunting to do this, but I really think for the benefit of all of us, you know, we pride ourselves, we're environmental city, that we wanna be an inclusive city, we have a parade every year, whatever, you know, let's not forget those, you know, that are going to be extra help, that can't walk, that they, you know, that they are in wheelchairs, or they have people, family members that are in wheelchairs, you know, nothing's worse than living here, paying taxes, and having to sit out on the street, and try to imagine what the beach is like, you know, it really is, this city is meant for all of us, every single person that lives here.
I wanna reiterate that we cannot put it at New York, because you have to provide access to the facility for the ADA compliant, not just have a bathroom that's ADA compliant, you have to provide means of access to it. And right now, it's really, at New York, it's very, very difficult, not possible. But Long Beach Road might be a better option.
Maybe just one of the bigger stalls, right, like the, like the family porta potties, because they're porta potties, right? I mean, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, they're very special, actually.
Yeah, no, I mean, the, the individual one, like, I know, in, on Virginia Avenue, we said the portable trailer, and it has a separate ADA, one, the separate ADA, one was like a really large porta potty for lack of a...
Right.
So why couldn't we put one of those on New York?
You could put that in New York, but if someone's physical challenge, you have to provide means to get to it. Right now, it's gonna be located south of the Dune, right in the middle of the beach. So we have to have vision, make sure someone can get there, whether, and there are obstacles there, because we just built the payload or the crossover there, that's one of the only means for every vehicle to get over the beach.
Access the beach.
Access the beach. So we would have to build, really try to provide safe access to that. So Long Beach Road, my opinion would be less challenging, because you could probably figure out a way, once it's down the ramp, to create safe passage to get to the, to the unit. So to me, that makes more sense.
Wouldn't it be possible, would the unit at New York, if it passed, put it on the street side of the building?
The problem there, you know, that.
Would that hinder access, right, would it hinder access to vehicles trying to get in?
That's a new address there, I mean, I was just there today, it's, it's, um...
Because that would make the most sense if we could just block it down there.
And you really don't wanna control people to just walk across that, that new rampage is built there. It's probably, it's really not like this, but, that's why we chose the, that's why we're doing.
But if you could, you're gonna get back to us with.
Absolutely.
Maybe just, maybe it's just a family, maybe it's a family trailer, like, it's the larger porta potty, next to the regular one there. So folks that don't have the beach access, that's it. Okay, any, any other questions? Or comments? No? Okay, so you know hands, next time. Thank you, Mr. Bridge.
I am six, as a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of a local law amendment, so far see of the late acts related to the charter of the city of Long Beach regarding a local law to override tax levy limit established in general municipal law section 3C. This item's publication only adhering will be held May 7th at 7pm. I am seven, as a resolution authorizing publication of the general summary of the capital improvement program for the next five years, and authorizing publication of the general summary of the proposed budget for year July 1st, 2019 through June 3rd, 2020, and notice the public hearings thereon. This item's publication only adhering will be held May 7th and May 21st at 7pm. I am three, I am three, as a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to enter to a agreement for strategic consulting services.
I will.
I will.
Um, I'm a little conflicted with this one, because we just, we're gonna potentially commit to spending $140,000, when we could have seen the work we were buying ahead of time. So I would hope CMA's first recommendation would be, don't do knucklehead things like that. And, and as a council member who struggled greatly to get information needed to vote, I'm sympathetic to other council members that feel they want additional information. But that being said, also, this is something the city desperately needs. So with that, I'll vote yes.
While I value my fellow council members' votes and their opinions, and I truly believe every council member up here has the city's best interest at heart, and wants to steer the city in the best possible direction, we all may have different opinions on how to get there. I do believe financial planning is the long-term goal, and I believe that T.M.A. Virgo might be that group. I just can't bring myself to vote for them now, while they're already on the job, being paid, and the report is imminent. And when talking representation by acting city manager Agostese, is that their report is probably within the next week, maybe two, which will be for our next council meeting. So if not at all, I may be, I have to vote yes.
Well, I'm actually, I respect the viewpoint that the board even shared. I actually, I'm actually pleased with acting city manager, or Robby Agostese's efforts to make our financial status a top priority. I believe that CMA will help us to move forward, to establish priorities, to create a plan, to provide a plan that can actually create fiscal health and accountability. And so at this time, I'm going to vote yes.
Just to echo some of the things that have been said, I think this is an important step in creating an environment of fiscal health, and I thank our acting city managers for acting so quickly to ensure that we have a step in place, particularly before the budget is voted on. With that, I vote yes.
I think everyone's gonna be pleased with their work product. They're a very impressive organization with a long history throughout New York State, and I vote yes.
I am four, as a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to enter to a contract with the Inwood Fire District for the performance of fire alarm dispatch service.
I will.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I'd just like to thank Commissioner Cummins for everything, and I vote yes.
I am five, as a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to enter to a contract for the rental of portable restroom trailers for the Ocean Beach Park with the lowest responsible, oh, sorry, lowest responsive, responsible business.
I will.
I will.
Yes. Yes.
I just wanted to make a comment. I think that it's very important in terms of design, that we begin to evolve and really follow some of the new groundbreaking practices in terms of just universal design that works for everyone. And at some point, I hope that we can get to that level. I'm sure with the permanent bathrooms, we'll do that, because now, again, a lot of organizations and institutions are really looking at the unisex bathroom, or gender-free bathroom, instead of identifying it's a larger space and it works for all. And I hope that we'll move into that direction with that. I vote yes, with the understanding that we will make sure that one of these bathrooms are ADA compliant, so that we can again have access for all.
I know that a lot of effort went into ensuring that this item was prepared and taken care of. I wanna thank our beach maintenance superintendent, Tommy Kenner, Joseph Riccio, as well as Christian Morando, for answering all of my questions, and for making sure that everything is taken care of and it's timely, fashioned, so we can begin the beach season with the access that we need to restrooms. With that, I vote yes.
I would just like to, again, George, just to please send us something about how we can get all the locations ADA compliant, we all appreciate it. And I vote yes.
I am six, as a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of a local law amendment, so far see of the late acts relating to the charter of the city of Long Beach regarding a local law to override the tax levy limit established in general municipal law section 3C.
I will.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Finally, I am seven, as a resolution authorizing publication of the general summary of capital improvement program for the next five years, and authorizing publication of the general summary of the proposed budget for the year July 1st, 2019 through June 3rd, 2020, and notice the public hearings thereon.
I will.
I will. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I will. I will.
Yes.
Just wanted to wish all the residents, because I hope to see you, that you would enjoy a happy Easter and happy Passover. With that, I vote yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now we get to awkward warfare. Everyone knows we have three minutes of uninterrupted time. We'll answer your questions if we can. And I just ask everyone to be respectful.
You just flipped them over.
Yes. First in, that's right. Um, first up is Mr. Gerald Zimbalski. Do you want the microphone, sir? We'll bring it to you.
Yes, Gerald Zimbalski, 522 short, Long Beach, 30 years. I was a trade before, I was a shop store. I was well-known at the New York City Transit. Larry Ruder, my old first-name base, and Tom Fenn, we used to roll the signs. Anyway, I'm the guy with long horns. If they ask who am I, I said it was off course. So, when I am a disabled person now, relying on public transportation in the city of Long Beach, I expect a little cooperation. All the bus drivers know it. They're all cooperative. They put the ramp out on the sidewalk, and do their job, unless one, one doesn't. This is never, it can't be sustained. But the lady was written to, our little acting city manager, he doesn't like having a fat, white bathroom on his bus. Now, that could be shop walk at the New York City Transit. I've heard that drunk one. What else allow the law back? Because they don't have to lose both correctness at the New York City Transit, we have a policy of shop walk. That's not shop walk to the customers. Out here in Long Beach, we have to respect our citizens. We have a 92-year-old war bathroom, who's being told he doesn't wanna be picked up, he wants to be picked up in front of this building, because it's inconvenient for this particular driver to drive down narrow streets. We have a woman in a wheelchair at the nursing home complains to me that she can't go out on Saturdays, because this particular driver is the only one renting the hours. And he doesn't like tying her wheelchair up in the bus. Our buses just need a little improvement, they're all, they're waiting, and we had one of our drivers get injured lifting the ramp up off the ground. And they laughed at her when she said her back. It's easy to get someone to hurt their back. But, just some relation with the management of the buses, I took everybody from the city of Long Beach involved, the management, and this driver to Massa County, Illinois, and did have enough evidence. A month after that hearing, I got the evidence. This is going on to give. I brought a young woman on the bus with a gas, and the guy went, "Oh, it's it." And he threatened to throw off the bus. And it was really only one person that had a conversation. All the questions asked, he's like, it was, you're fine. So I took her out to practice, and on the way back, he's listening to the radio, "How many got off the coast along the road a little bit?" I'm getting kind of confused for a couple of months with the racial animosity. But just the past thought, he gets in, didn't want me on his bus on Saturday. And it's much traffic in Long Beach, and he successfully parked the bus in front of the coffee shop with the ramp up, and said, "Can't you walk to the street?" And then we drove down Riverside, going back to Shore Road. He said, "I really don't want you on my bus, it's much traffic on Saturday, I don't want you anymore." And I told him, "What's happening?" He said, "No, no, you don't get it, I don't want you on the bus."
Clearly, your service is unacceptable, I believe anybody that's listening.
Right. Then the title said the violation.
Okay.
Bringing it up to a federal court, I'm reading some of it today. You just tell President that they aired it, and President informed, this new city manager had a letter.
Okay.
And I was wanting to bring up any information we need to.
Okay. It's completely unacceptable, I would say. I can speak for anybody, I feel that what you're describing is completely unacceptable. Thank you.
Neither part of it, the guy just tells him, "Have to get the evidence."
The, the, the acting city manager has told me that he does have the letter, so he has your contact information, and someone from the city, I presume his office or corporation counsel will be in touch with you very soon.
And I have a full explanation as a shop tool on how to streamline your operations.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your service, I'll keep it with you. Eileen Heshen?
Eileen Heshen, Long Beach. I have a lot of questions on here, but I'm gonna read the things straight through, because it's almost three minutes long, and if you have any answers, maybe you could get them to me afterwards. It's all about money. We're almost bankrupt, but all you keep doing is spending more money, borrowing and bonding. You have to start thinking outside of the box, we need some creative thinking. But first, there's easy money. Number one, stop hiring. Number two, stop giving raises. And number three, stop paying overtime. Next, you can start collecting money that is due to the city. For example, bed and breakfasts are not allowed in Long Beach, yet they flourish. Either find them, or start collecting taxes on them. Next, I have heard of several instances of people not paying their bills at the youth and family services. It seems that city employees or relatives of city employees owe lots of money for childcare. Here's an example. In 2017, a city employee who works there entered into an agreement with Deputy City Manager Mike Robinson to pay $200 a month toward the $17,000 she owed for childcare. To date, the employee has not paid anything toward this bill, and yet still works for the city. The city has not done anything to collect the money, so I have questions. Number one, what does the city plan to do to get the money? Number two, was Mr. Robinson authorized to make such an agreement? Is it binding, valid, and enforceable? Number three, was Mr. Agostese, who was corporation counsel at the time, aware of the agreement? Did he advise the parties of the legality of the agreement and its terms? If Mr. Agostese was unaware of the agreement, and Mr. Robinson acted on his own, is that legal? Are there other such agreements made by Mr. Robinson or other people in City Hall? Are they legal? Are they being honored? There are other city workers who failed to make their payments for childcare services, and the city seems to have forgiven the debt. Has Mr. Agostese allowed some city workers to get free childcare services from youth and family services? Specifically, former city manager Jack Sherman's personal secretary, who currently works for him in the Nasi Kamti Comptroller's Office, has an unpaid balance of over $3,000 dating back to when she worked for the city. I understand Mr. Agostese knows about this, so the question is, is Mr. Agostese authorized to forgive debts owed to the city by current or former employees? These two cases are worth over $20,000, a drop in the basket. I've been told there are others. Both parties continue to work for the government, one in Long Beach, the other in Massa County. Their wages could easily be garnished. Two years have passed, Long Beach is struggling financially. Why not collect what is due before borrowing more? Thank you.
I mean, I'm not familiar with those, I'm not familiar with those allegations, or you go with those allegations.
Well, I guess there's more details to you tomorrow, but if you spoke to Mr. Robinson, I'm sure you'd get all the details. I understood you were involved with them, but I guess I'm wrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eileen Heshen, for bringing that to our attention. First time here.
Okay, do we, do we intend to take some kind of action or to look into these allegations?
I mean, I, it will, I'm gonna have to start with you, Services, obviously, but I'll be But we certainly should be looking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jake Oslo.
Good evening, Jake Oslo, Long Beach. Again, please do not interrupt. On the order of chance, we can respond to anything you want to say. We told that to the end of my comments. The city has been asked in many ways by many different people to produce copies of certain agreements between, it meaning the city, and Mr. Agostisi. However, one may characterize these agreements, the city had refused to provide copies to the public. Moreover, certain city council members have asked for copies of these agreements and have denied access to these records. For whatever reason, the city, unadvised from Mr. Agostisi himself, has alternately denied the existence of the records. At other times, they have said that they've given the only copy of these records to the New York State Comptroller as part of his record request in connection with the payouts. And at other times, I believe with Mr. Barrios, who said it's inappropriate to discuss these records at a city council meeting. Now, these are records that are plainly disclosable. I don't know why the city refused to disclose them. Despite Mr. Agostisi cloaking these records in secrecy, three members of his council still went ahead and voted to appoint Mr. Agostisi as acting city manager. I am asking that the council direct Mr. Agostisi to provide these records in unredacted form immediately and that anything less than the full disclosure of these agreements, while it is foiled law, undermines public confidence in the legality of these agreements. And residents of this city should not have to have concern about whether or not our city manager, acting or otherwise, has in the past, or perhaps even presently, been partying to illegal agreements leading to his employment and compensation. Second is, I note you didn't ask any questions from any of the previous Good Welfare Cards. In particular, you haven't asked any of the... I have asked at any of the last two Good Welfare Cards. During one of those, I asked for an update on what have any steps the city has taken toward the hiring of a permanent city manager. I still await an answer. I have also asked whether or not Mr. Agostisi has tendered any payments to the city of Long Beach for any reason, whatever you may characterize them, whatever you may call them. Have you sent any money back in a way toward the city? And lastly, Mr. Agostisi, you said during the discussion about hiring CMA and the urgency of your belief as the urgency, you said, and I quote here, "Why do tomorrow what you can do today?" How come we don't take that approach when it comes to examining the accuracy of payouts? How come we're in a big headlong rush to hire a planner that's already working for us and not asking us for that money? But yet, the examination of payouts that you were prepared to fund another $400,000 toward today? No, we're doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Agostisi. Eddie Gromon?
Eddie Gromon. I first want to thank the council for going in order with the Good Welfare Cards and advising Mr. McTearman to not touch the Good Welfare Cards. So thank you. I appreciate you following that from the last meeting. Recently, the city released its audited financial statements. These audited financial statements discuss the city's overall financial health and are different than the New York State Comptroller's audit. Some highlights from their report include, the city has $177 million more debt than it has in assets. The city has $90 million of bonded debt and $360 million of liabilities. We have $158 million of health insurance liabilities because we pay 100% of employee healthcare costs for their entire lives. The city has raided its reserve funds, leaving us with about $3 million in reserves on a $100 million budget. The city didn't just raid the general reserve fund, but also drained the sewer fund and the water funds' reserves. Finally, to summarize the whole financial state of the city. In 2017, 18, we spent $1.5 million more than we budgeted, but brought in $4 million less in revenue, specifically $600,000 less in beach revenue. I've asked the council before, what is the plan to fix this? But Mr. Oramo has said, "None of us have financial experience. There is no financial plan." But Mr. Agostisi has recently said that he has a financial plan. So, Mr. Agostisi, what is your financial plan to fix this problem?
Well, you're going to be here, Mr. Oramo. You're hearing a lot about that.
He's speaking, right?
Sure. They were hearing a lot about that in May during budget hearings. But one central component of it was just accomplished today, to bring in a separate, dedicated financial professional. That's how you start to build a foundation. Another argument, should we like to talk about the audit, is the recommendation about finding full-time control. We're down to our final few candidates now. Expect to have a full-time controller, hopefully. And this is a promise, but I'm hoping by the end of this month. And there are other aspects that we're focusing on as well. Obviously, gang ad audit in on time for the first time in several years was frankly a big accomplishment in itself. So we're pleased with that. And we're thankful to our technical staff and our ex-technical staff as well. And in the... During the last week, I submitted my first proposed budget to the council, which will be made public by the end of the week. And that is the fourth component. So without really delving into the details of that, because we're still on that sort of precautionary waiting period until it comes out. But that's a start. And that's my first 60 days.
I am happy with... I have seen some progress, which I'm happy about. But I would like you to go in a little... You said you can't go into details. I would just like you to go into a little more details about the specific plans because I think you shouldn't just, like, as you're doing it, have a little tidbit, "Oh, to bring in these consultants, that's a part of my financial plan. Oh, to have this audit on time, that's a part of my financial plan." Can you just tell us in detail, right now, what the financial plan is so that we can have time to critique it? We can have time to analyze it and consider if it's actually a positive plan?
That's what the budget process is. When we go through the budget hearings, we're going to go through all that. So, thanks.
I personally just don't think we should wait. We should expose it right now. Transparent, in purposes of transparency.
Sure. And plus, I should mention that CMA is going to be essential in helping to develop that plan.
Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Delore.
David, if you don't mind. This is just a financial plan, or a checklist, I'll call it. It's about the payouts which you just voted down or tabled tonight. You'll see outlined in there... I mean, this is for your benefit. Rather than just a name and a number and an amount, there is a grand total of the payout liability to a particular person. But in this schedule, it shows $50,000, $30,000. But they're paid out over two years, three years, four years. So you have no idea what is coming next year and year after. But I would certainly want to know that. And I would suggest that all of you collectively get the answers to this information. So you preview the budget so you know what your liability is going to be. That's all. I filled out the names from the sheet that you gave out tonight, or that was given out two weeks ago. The amounts were filled in already. So all you have to do is, for example, let's say Ronnie Pagani, he was paying $50,000. I think his gross is $150,000 or something like that. So you project it out. I could be wrong with something like that. The names highlighted in yellow, are they all new retirees? Can anybody answer that one? If so, this is $531,000. Why not put it in next year's budget? Number two, what was Jose Maguez's job title? How many years did he work there? And what was his last annual salary? These are questions that we can answer either tonight or in the future. Gordon Tepper left in September, but I believe he was hired back since I have seen him at meetings. Did he get hired back in the same position? If so, what is that status? Because I believe his name is on this payout sheet. Why can't a spreadsheet similar to the one here be presented so we build the totals in the amount of years? And that's what CMA should be able... Somebody should be able to do this. I think it's... I don't appreciate taking my time to prepare something like this if it's just going to be disregarded. Please forgive my little blood nature right there. Recently, in Freeport, Moody's is going... Freeport's bar rating is going up. Long Beach is going down. The Long Beach interest rate is going up. I think the tax rate last year's increase was 8%. The reserve fund fell $5 million, and the debt was increased. And this is Freeport going exactly the opposite direction. And I hope Long Beach will go in that direction as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Delore.
I don't know if you can answer any questions.
I can quickly answer some of Mr. Delore's questions. Mr. Maya did not require you this year. Mr. Angus did. Mr. Apple did. Mr. Charlie did. Mr. Maguez did. Mr. Stark did.
Okay.
Those are the yellow highlights. So you should answer another question. Another spreadsheet has been prepared and distributed to the council, which will be official detail, including separation date of payouts and the number of installment payment that they're actually on.
Correct. So that will be distributed to the council as it...
The council has it now.
The council has it now. Thank you and good luck.
I think that's really good. I have left the sheet. Next? Okay. John McNally?
John McNally, 613 West Hornland Street. I may actually be shorter, easier, and less heavy than everybody else. My real basic question is, will the council be holding open working meetings on the budget?
Open hearing.
Open working meetings.
We have a hearing. It's also here.
Does the... Outside of the public hearings, does the council want to sit down and discuss items related to the budget?
I don't know that we can all meet together, but we can.
Would you agree that maybe it is best practice for the entire council to get together and discuss the budget? So I would offer that it is widely acceptable and best practice for the entire city council to get together and discuss the budget publicly as we're doing it. Isn't that very significant, Eric? No, that's not significant. Do you guys ever get together to discuss the budget? We haven't... When we got the budget, some of us met. The city manager.
Three of you mixed a corn, so you violated the open meetings. I was also an attorney with that, right? Your attorney's presence, unless he was talking about items that are exempted from open meeting laws, in which case you would have to go into executive session. Executive session can only take place as part of an open meeting or a public meeting. So you're admitting that you've already violated...
No, that's not...
So we've... Three council members got together to discuss the budget? Three council members got together to discuss a lot of other things, attorney-client matters? The budget is an attorney-client matter? The budget is the end result of legislation. The legislature resolution, other resolutions to discuss. No, the budget is public. It is decision, and it's public matters. It's not attorney-client. It's sheer present. Mr. McNally all tied into a separate piece of legislation. That is the end result of the... Is it public business? Absolutely. Then it needed to be conducted in public. That's absolutely incorrect. Your analysis is totally... You are the Corporation Councilman advisor to this council on the open meeting? Oh, I know it very well. Would you like to get to a conference call with Robert Freeman tomorrow? Listen, are you an attorney, sir? I spoke with Robert Freeman. I... There's enough questions for you. Well, I... I spoke with Robert Freeman. Are you an attorney? I said you do not need to be an attorney. You understand open meeting laws. Apparently, you do. I would love to come in on a conference call with you with Robert Freeman to discuss this because you are dead absolutely wrong on this. And I will give you... I will give you chapter and verse. Is there... Your opinion citing that the mere presence of council does not make it exempt. You need to conduct public business in public. The only reason that you go in... And your executive session for attorney-client purposes is when you are discussing something legal of which the budget is not... Thank you. Not... 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 Thank you. Oh, my time is up? That does not potentially... You're running, Mr. McNally. Your analysis is fatally flawed. I'll look forward to discussing with Mr. Freeman. Mr. Delore. Just for what it's worth... Excuse me. Just for what it's worth, I was having to leave that. I agree. I can see that you're... I don't think that would violate the...
As I said, Long Beach. I am an attorney. I am familiar with open meeting laws, and it is a violation. Okay? Now, Mr. Oramo, a few months ago, you decided that you... Unanimarily decided that you were going to stop stopping the clock, get to answer people's questions, and basically told them, "Oh, we'll answer it next week, uh, next meeting," and stuff like that. Have you noticed that's not working? We're not getting answers to our questions. I ask questions. Also, two people ask questions. And you want to know what happens? Nothing. We don't get answers to them. So why not go back to the way that was working, where you stopped the clock and you put in an answer? That's the way democracy's supposed to be working. I don't understand it. I don't understand unless, of course, you don't want to answer the questions, and then this is a perfect opportunity. You just tell people, "Oh, we'll answer it in a few weeks," and they never get answered. Just food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you. So they did review the questions from last week. They wanted answers. They will all relate to the budget. And Rob, David, I'm sorry, Acting City Manager Agostisi, I'm sorry. Did say, "Well, we'll get to all the budgetary questions, including Hay's questions, when we have our hearings and our budget hearings." So that's when I'll find us appropriate for that as we wind down to the budget season. John Dean?
Once again, just I want to wrap up, come to a high point concerning the lack of adequate traffic control measures in West Park from New York to Nevada. I have an amended thing. I left the... And that's your last one. There's nine streets that do not have an east-west traffic control. They get very difficult for pedestrians across the street. Very difficult for cars to eat rest and make a right or left, we can go across the street. Especially during the morning and evening rush hours. And it's only going to get worse when the beach clubs open in the summer and more people come here visiting us. And I visited the traffic department again, just to talk to them. They will not do anything unless they direct it upon the people above, which is the manager and yourselves. So what I'm asking you is, number one, I presented, I think, sufficient information to warrant the installation of at least signs that say, "New York State law yields pedestrian." And New York State law do not block intersections. I'm asking the city council and the city managers, when you say "active," because you are the city manager, to direct the installation of these signs before one day. And if possible, put up temporary stop signs at these locations going in and out. It's not going to hurt anything. Tell them it's an experiment for the summer. You might see that it works out. We've had the utility workers, I mentioned just last time, and the traffic's stopped. You know, temporarily, these people got stopped, and then they got to come. There wasn't any traffic. So I don't see why we can't do that. And as far as the electronic speedometer thing, I saw it once or twice about a month ago. I haven't seen it since then.
Usually, I believe it stays like a week, and then they take the data and see... Because it records the speed in Marshall five.
Right.
Yeah, this needs to be addressed because I went and I thought...
Yeah, this needs to be addressed, because I went, and I thought during the last meeting you said that the speedometer was actually there and it wasn't. It hasn't been there in a couple weeks.
Well, it has been. Well, in the age of technology, they download the data, what's the results?
Let's just say, Ford was here to also help us request the traffic safety study. And I drive that, I drive that road, and minimum of two times, usually three times a day back and forth back and forth. So, I'm very much with the idea.
Can we put the signs? I'm asking you, Arama. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sam Pizan? Marcia Isman? They get it right this time?
Hi, Marcia Isman, West Hornet Street. I mentioned, I brought up the topic last week, the radio wave frequency issue, which I really believe is a serious public health matter. And I first of all, just like thanking Councilman Mandel for being willing to take note and, or to advocate for, advocating this matter. I'm asking the rest of the council to give it serious consideration. We really need our public officials to advocate for us on this, that this city follow, partly in a day in Long Beach. Although there's an OPDA program, I think a lot of people don't realize, or that they say there's an OPDA program. There are a lot of exceptions, such as multiple dwellings, people who have solar energy, and they're doing something here, excellent energy, to do something good for the environment, and they've started spewing, you know, this radiation we have. So, there's actually a bill that Senator Booney filed, and pending, Senator Dippel, maybe the public can kind of say, thank you to people who are doing things, kind of call people. Public officials can contact other public officials. There needs to be a great outcry on this matter, because it's really, really serious. And I have, the other piece of this is that, you know, PMCG, part of this bill is to stop the SSG from extorting the public, saying, "We can have the PMS a few years unless the letter," you know, so, to be safe, you actually have to start paying a month or two. So, that really is a caution. And I have information here. I'll give it to the council. Anybody else that's here that wants it, as to why, when should OPDA be started, what kinds of problems can occur, a few steps in that way, being grateful for our technology, and OPDA, of course, that's what we send to SSG. So, anybody councilor has a very hard hope you go on with us.
Marcia, just by way of following up, I do want to note, before our council meeting tonight, I trust each and every council member was receptive, interested, and I believe the council as a whole is gonna follow up on the issue.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have some forms that you wanted to give us, or?
Yes.
I pray you will take them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Egan? Okay, that's it for this evening. So, I thank everyone for coming and participating. And please be okay. And everyone have a very happy Easter. And a happy Passover, shared with your family and friends.